Use the mic there, so I can get you on the recording.
Thank you. I'm Tommy Sheridan. I live at 610 Spruce Street. I wanted to speak in favor of item 10. I just want to speak in favor of the Mariculture permit that's before you all. That's listed for Anya and Cola and Native Conservancy. I just want to speak in general in favor for that. And during later parts of the meeting for audience participation, I'd like to just speak a little bit in reference to Mariculture in general. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other audience comments? Go ahead, Councilmember or Citizen Guard.
Yeah, my name's Jeff Gard. I live at 902 Cliff Trail, Cordova, Alaska. My wife and I are trying to buy some tidelands adjacent to our house down in the slough, so we can increase the lot size enough that we'll have enough square footage to divide it into two lots. And we'd like to put up another single-family dwelling on it. So, we feel it would be a boon for the city of Cordova because we can increase housing stock in Cordova, which we all know we need, and get more property on the tax rolls, which some people are going to enjoy. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other audience comments? Seeing none, then Chairperson's Representatives, the Boards of Commissions, anybody from CCMC? Authority Board? How about the School Board? Anybody from the School Board online or anything? Okay, we don't have a Student Council rep yet, so moving on to the consent calendar is before you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to remove the item 6, there are minutes from the August 3rd point to regular council meeting.
Okay, we can move those down to right below H.
So, on the remaining consent calendar item, Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Ann Chaffer?
Yes.
The Consent Calendar's board.
Okay, down to approval of minutes, item 6, minutes of August 3rd meeting. Councilmember Baylor?
Yes, I'd like to, on page 3 of your packet, the minutes, I think under item F there, number 2, I'd like to strike this sentence here. This Tom, he has his property behind hers, and there's used to be an easement between them that he had vacated. And this is the part that is untrue, and he had the road changed. After having discussions with the correspondence with the clerk, people can stand up and say they want something on the record, but whether it has anything to do with any or not, I guess goes on the record. Correct me if I'm wrong in that. But as far as any had the road changed, that's not true. So, I don't believe that should be part of our final record.
So, that's a...
Well, nobody moved to approve it first. We should move to approve it first.
On purposes of stuff, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve. Okay, now, Councilmember Baylor had an amendment?
Yeah, I would like to, I guess, strike where it says in parentheses, "Any had the road changed."
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Moved and seconded to discussion? Oh, I guess you already discussed it. Second, have a, any discussion?
I've just got a question for what may be an appropriate way to deal with. Because if somebody made a comment that's part of a record, I don't know if we can strike it out of the record. But is there some way we could annotate it to say? What would be?
I don't think it should be stricken from the record. I think since the only way you should amend minutes is if you have a correction to them, but not really by striking something, or unless it was done incorrectly, and you can refer it maybe back to staff and have me re-listen. But I don't think I got the words wrong.
Was there some way, a statement in here that would cover what Tom's concerns are?
I would say if he makes a statement, you know, while you're weighing, approving the minutes, to speak to what he thinks was untruth that was spoken in the minute, in the, at the meeting, that will make tonight's minutes, so it will be...
But we won't, we can't put anything in?
Not really. It was not spoken at the meeting. You can't annotate or correct a set of minutes with something that wasn't said then.
Well, somebody can come in and say something false about any member of the community, council of staff, and that can't be corrected?
You could have corrected it at the meeting. It would have made the same set of minutes, but her comments still would have gone in. If you look at how I write the correspondence primer, I was even shocked when Holly helped me write that correspondence primer, that what a person can say at a meeting, there is a lot of leeway. And they're going to have to be like endangering a person for you to stop them from speaking at a meeting. Three minutes is a reason they would stop speaking at a meeting. But, and if it's a disparaging written letter, it won't make correspondence in a packet. But they can come and read that letter, even if it's disparaging, and we can't stop them.
And I don't disagree with that. I would say that, you know, anybody can come up here and say pretty much whatever they want to say. But we don't have to put all of that in the minutes. You know, we don't, we don't put every word that they, that everybody says in the minutes necessarily.
That's true. And I don't know what caused it. I don't think a lot of people say. I cert, I, you know, and I want that on the record. Council members often do. I know that's a precedent I can think of, like as you're weighing a decision, you know, an action item. I've heard you say, "And for the record," which are great things when I'm someone who researches minutes a lot. It's nice to hear why something was said. So, I wrote it, but it seems not correct to take it out now, to me.
Well, I'm not going to follow my story about this. It's not a big deal. It's just not true. So, my next question is, going back, how should we, or if something happens in the future, how do we handle that? I mean, we're going to interrupt the whole meeting to go, "He said, she said, no, I never moved the road." And she's going to stand up and say, "Well, you did," and then...
You, you are allowed to respond to public comments, you know, respectfully, like you are respectful in your own debate. So, and it was hard that night because you were chairing the meeting. I think you were thinking of all the chairing part of it and not that part. But it would have been okay then, after her comments were made, for you to make your own statement about what she said.
Well, I'm good with just correcting the record on a night, whoever, or everybody should do that, and leaving it in there. But it just, it struck me as odd, and weird precedent, some people come up and say something false about, it's the council, the mayor, staff, anybody, and, you know, even a staff member, if they weren't here to, say, assert some of our public work, if they're not here to wreck that, how do you, you know, it's kind of weird. I guess the city manager would have to step in. I don't know.
I think we've been lucky. I don't think a lot of it has happened over the years in Cordova, so we've been lucky. But I do think there are some pretty awful city council meetings elsewhere. You can look on YouTube.
Senator Gard?
Do we annotate this with a footnote and just say, "See September 7th, 2022 minutes?"
For follow-up or something?
Yeah, I mean, as a response to it, so it doesn't, I understand.
I see that.
I don't want to see it standalone without some kind of response to it, but I don't want to...
I think I could do that. I could do that without editing the actual minutes.
I'm also bringing this out for, like I said, for future, like, wow, that seemed kind of different to me.
We could also annotate it to say something along, and maybe we could defer these minutes to approve and let the clerk do some rewording. But we could say something like, "She asserted that Tom Baylor this," or "She," you know, make it clear that she wasn't stating facts, that she was, she was asserting her opinion.
That's a pretty strong opinion.
In this, well...
Well, the whole subject that she was commenting on was kind of heated at the time.
Yeah, it was nothing to do with it.
No, I understand. But we all know that stuff comes out when...
Anyway, we've got an amendment on the floor to strike that what's in parentheses. Did you vote on that?
Well, I could...
Or you want to withdraw?
I withdraw my amendment.
Okay.
Would I make an amendment to make a notation in there?
I think you've told me to. I'll do that part.
Yeah.
That I will footnote it and say, for follow-up, "See minutes of September 7th, 2022."
So, we're good with that?
Yep.
Then the main motion is back on the floor to approve the minutes of August 3rd.
All for the question.
Question we called, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pros?
Aye.
Oops, sorry. Sorry, Melina. Got a pause for you. Okay, consideration of bids, proposals, nothing on there. So, we're down to the mayor's report. I have a written report in the packet. If there's any questions on that, be happy to answer those for you. Yes?
No questions, but I just wanted to thank you for making the time for Sally's Garden dedication and making the call to move us indoors, because that was swift. And that's where we needed to be.
I don't make those decisions. I disagree with them. Kathy wrote, wrote most of the words that I had to say for that. So, I appreciate, appreciate your help as well.
Thanks for getting the, the letter put in. So, thanks to staff and you for working on that. Do you know when the ferry's schedule is supposed to be announced?
I talked... Heard this week, but...
Yeah, Friday or Monday.
We're getting close to...
What are the more recent rumors on what we're going to have for the two unnamed months?
Some service. They, it's not clear. There wasn't anything definitive. I just, I talked to somebody. I talked to Matt Groening, Greening, however you say his name, in Stutz's office. And he said they're working on some changes. He feels like the commissioner is receptive to what Representative Stutz has been saying. And yeah, they expect to schedule Friday or Monday.
I talked to him. What do you think?
Sounds like the issue is more this year's crew than it is money.
Okay.
Money seems to be there, but they just can't get enough crew to crew all of the, all the boats, which, you know, is part of their own fault for shutting down every winter. But, anyway, there, I've, everything I've heard is that we'll have some service, but the level, we don't have any indication of yet.
Yeah, I think they're still trying to figure out, can they use the Taslina for some parts of it? And how would they juggle vessels?
Yeah. Anyway, okay, I have a special, special thing on my agenda tonight. And I'm going to read most of it because I want to make sure I get the words right. As mayor, I am pleased to introduce to you Andrew D. Goss, him and his family are in the audience there, as Cordova's new chief of police. Chief Gosh will lead a department called upon to protect and serve Cordova. As citizens in uniform, police officers do more than prevent crime. They protect the welfare of the community. City's police officers are entrusted with considerable authority unavailable to other citizens. And with that authority comes the responsibility to serve the public, safety, interests of the public. A strong and capable chief of police leads his officers and dispatcher's team to ensure these responsibilities are met. It is a great honor to have the opportunity to swear in Cordova's new police officer, Andrew Goss. You want to join me up here, Andrew?
Right here?
Yeah, yeah, come on up. Come on up.
Don't be afraid.
I'll give you this one. I'll read a paragraph, then you, then you read that paragraph following, okay? And I gave you the words there, so we don't have to memorize a sentence here. "I state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Alaska, and that I will respect constitutional rights of all mankind to liberty, equality, and justice." Repeat after me, yes.
I, Andrew D. Goss, do solemnly swear that I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Alaska, and that I will respect the constitutional rights of all mankind to liberty, equality, and justice.
I will protect the citizens and police officers whose care has been entrusted to me, and I will safeguard lives and property.
I will protect the citizens and police officers whose care has been entrusted to me, and I will safeguard lives and property.
I accept the law enforcement code of ethics of the Alaska Police Standards Council as my standard of conduct while on and off duty.
I accept the law enforcement code of ethics of the Alaska Police Standards Council as my standard of conduct while on and off.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as the chief of police of the Cordova Police Department according to the laws and regulations of the city of Cordova, the state of Alaska, and this country to the best of my skills and abilities.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as the chief of police of the Cordova Police Department according to laws and regulations of the city of Cordova, the state of Alaska, and this country to the best of my skills and abilities.
Congratulations. Welcome, chief. You want to sign the check over to me there?
Don't think so.
There you go. All right, thank you.
Do you have a, what do you want to say about?
Of course, I have several words. I'm grateful for this opportunity that I have to serve as the chief in this great community that we live in. Me and my family love it here. We were here for a short time back in 18, left, realized that was a huge mistake. It's two years to get back over here. We love it. You know, it's a good, great place to raise our family. Kids love it here. Now, I'm in the, the police side is, you know, I took a break for a while. You know, I've been in law enforcement for a short time, 14 years. The deep position came open. Me and my wife talked about it for a while. And I'm, I just have a good feeling in my stomach that this is something I need to do, that I could do my part to help the police department, the dispatchers, everybody involved in the police department, the community, to get us in the, you know, in a good direction to where getting more officers up in the community more, we're being seen. It brings us all together as a team. My partner, when I came in here, as I was a sergeant in my previous agency, transferred. I want everybody to know what we're doing, that we're here to help and serve. And, you know, open door policy with me. If you guys have any questions concerned, come talk to me. Just because I have the title of chief, I don't look at myself right here, right there at ground level with my guys. And I know what it was like to be on ground level, and that's something that I promised myself I'd never forget, if I had the opportunity. As I'm getting older, I'm finding out that I'm a lot more emotional, and I don't know where that comes from. But, you know, it's something that I love. It's something that I'm good at. And, you know, talking with Cameron, Officer Pfizer, and the dispatchers, we have a great team. And they're here and they're dedicated. I want to, you know, keep that going. And helping them is, you know, my main priority to, again, get more officers, help you guys out. Anything at all that I can do better, please don't be afraid. I've come in and talked to you. Call me on the phone. I don't know everything, and I never will. So, if you guys have ideas, let's work together as a team. It's a great team.
Welcome home.
Does the city keep this, or is...
I'll hang on to it, yeah.
Make him a copy.
Mayor Allison?
Yeah.
Could he introduce his family?
Sure, Andrew, or Chief Goss, you want to introduce your family?
Yeah, so this is my beautiful wife, Katie. This is my eldest, Elena, Briggs, Jackson, and Manny.
Welcome.
Welcome, all of you. Thank you.
Excellent.
Did you want a copy of this now, Chief Goss? We'll, we'll get you a copy of the signed one, too, but...
Yeah, we'll just get you a copy of this.
You can, you can, you can take this one.
Would have been nice to give it to him before. Sorry about that.
Yeah, sorry.
Didn't mean for you to trip over words. I hope you, you did well.
Okay, so that's my, my report, city manager's report.
So, there's a written report in the packet, including a number of things that we've been working on. I did want to let you know what's not in the report is that we're really close to closing on the bond for the harbor. We're watching the interest rates juggling and watching the bond yield finally start to flatten out. It was getting a little scary there for a little bit. But it's fallen across all maturities at this point. So, with any luck, within two weeks, we'll lock and we'll have lower rates. Going for a 25-year bond, which is the maximum that we can use for the life of the harbor. And that is progressing, so we will, we will have those resources locked up here very quickly. South Harbor rebuilt. I know Sam doesn't really have a lot of new stuff. We're, we're in the same kind of holding pattern. The RFP for the harbor is going to be released by the end of the month. Then a couple of weeks, there'll be a 45-day window. And today, we had a construction company and who's very interested in bidding on the job. So, I think we'll have a robust response to the RFP. So, very glad to hear that. There's a financial report in there, and I think probably the most important thing to note is it's through July 31st, so it's not reflective of any of August's activities, of which there was quite a bit. And property tax deadline was just at the very, very end of August. So, we'll have in our September financial report, we'll start seeing those numbers. But I think what you can see is that the revenues are coming in stronger than expected, and we are adjusting some of the expenses. So, we'll just keep an eye on that, but so far, so good. If there's any questions, please let me know. And then there are some staff reports. Paul Trumbly has a volunteer fire department report in there. And he wasn't able to get that in for the last meeting when many of the other reports were in. But I think we're all up to date. And with that, that's it for me.
Questions for the manager? Councilmember Baylor?
Yeah, so the staff changes, it's hard to keep up with coming along. But on the bottom line, are we, are we at net zero, or are we added?
Right now, we're at net zero. We're still, don't have a finance director, and we're, we're trying to beef up our capacity there, which is why there's a recommended adjustment to the budget. Curtis is leaving. Emily's replacing him. And then Colin Bronson, I guess if there was additional staff, we're, we're kind of tweaking some people around. But Colin is being brought on as special projects, and specifically to champion the on-the-ground work for the harbor that's needed to complement our project manager who lives in Washington State. So, that was an expected role that would be covered through the harbor project. I'm looking at expanding his capacities. I'm looking at expanding his capacities if we have budget for that and if there's general interest on the part of council. He is clearly an asset to our community, has a broad range of skills, and really could be of assistance to city on many levels, not just harbor.
But the harbor funding is going to cover his?
A part of it, yep.
Motion, Shaver?
I was just wondering if you had, I was hoping there'd be a CCMC representative, but I was wondering if you had any information about the next round of boosters coming to the community?
So they were meeting today. We don't yet have those boosters available in Cordova, and they are going to make an announcement as soon as they have been alerted by the state when they're getting those shots. So right at the moment, those next booster shots are not yet available in Cordova, but we'll have an announcement of that very soon.
I think I saw where the state only ordered 35,000 of those doses. So that's not going to go too awful far around state.
5,000?
Yeah. In this first round of boosters, yeah.
Well, there was discussion about more free, you know, start charging.
I don't know.
Councilmember Shaver?
Because I have another follow-up. Do you know what our capacity is on testing, because we can't get the free federal tests?
There's still, I mean, city, yeah, city still has quite a few of the rapid tests. So anybody that is planning on traveling and needs testing, you know, between the city and the hospital and the clinics, I think there's still quite a few free tests available. Certainly, city has some, and we are looking at potential expiration dates that are coming up, so we're happy to share those that are still obviously valid, but might be emerging as something we need to put in the trash can, and we'd love for people to use them. So, yeah.
Any other questions? Manager, Melina online, do you have any questions?
No questions for me, thank you.
Okay, and the staff report noted. City Clerk's report.
I just wanted to say that Paul did get his timely for last packet, and I left it out, so that was on me. And then we went a month without a meeting, so he wasn't that late. Sorry about that, Paul. And that's about it. I have a written report and can answer any questions if you have any.
Questions for the clerk?
Yeah, just a comment. Correspondence back and forth with Susan on how to handle the item. Council meeting minutes was very helpful, probably saved us a lot of time tonight, so thank you.
Any else for the clerk? Okay, and next up is correspondence. The agency review letter. Email from Brooke. Steve Davitz on the water farm. Fish and Wildlife, public comment period. My letter to the highway.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I guess I just want to make a comment on the item 10.
Yes.
So this, you know, I'm generally in support of agriculture activities. I just, I guess, want to throw it out there for the record. If anybody is seeking to do one of these leases, I think it would be very advantageous for them to sit down with CDU. It's the, this is the second one that I've seen that puts an aquatic lease right where is a traditional hook haul spot for the same fleet. And the NVE one, you know, you'll see it in another part of the packet that they moved their permit request location. That was because CDU reached out to them, and they were like, oh, yeah, no problem, we'll move it. So I'm hoping that something similar can happen with this one, but just want to, like, put that out there that if you're thinking about doing an aquatic farm, maybe reach out to CDU before you go through all the work, putting the packet together. We can make sure that these industries don't, you know, have to fight over territory. It's, you know, there's enough room out there for all of us, so thanks.
And I think also along the same lines with that, these, not that there's always a lot of time for us to comment and things like that, but I think the fisheries committee that we have is underutilized, probably, and this would be something that they could look at and throw their knowledge into the mix there if it's at all possible to, if we have time and we can get them the information. I think that maybe we can revitalize that committee a little bit with all of this aquatic marketing stuff going on, and there's a lot of money that's been put out for that in the next few years, so. Any comments on the, any of the other or any of those correspondents? Okay, hearing none, then we'll move along to ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 1202, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska enacting section 5.22.030, codifying the land disposal map process to increase public awareness of municipal land sale, uh, municipal land status on first reading.
Second.
Baller seconded, Schaefer. Okay, Councilmember Baylor?
Yeah, I guess I've got a question. On page 57 there, item 3 fiscal impact.
Yes.
Okay, so the state's proposed change with increased material costs and staff time and additional three to five hours processing a letter of interest that involve requests for changes status of a lot not available to available to the public notice requirement. There will also be additional legal fees for the review of the ordinance to change the code. So I'm well aware, and then I advocate for staff time for permits or for chief, but I do have a problem with this, if I understand it right. So let me run this by you. If a citizen comes in and says, I want to, I would like to purchase lot X, and you have it and it's not available, they're going to be charged with money?
So, no, this was just informing you that the, what the additional staff time is going to take. So the way that our permitting process works, I mean, we don't charge a hourly rate for our permits, it's just a set fee. So whether that set fee will recover the cost that staff is taking on, you know, currently it's $250 for a letter of interest, so whether that fee needs to be adjusted to account for this noticing, you know, that'd be something we could handle with the fee schedule, but this was just to inform the council that this code change, when this sort of action comes up, it will take up an additional three to five hours of staff's time, that they wouldn't be then working on something else.
Okay, because I interpreted that the applicant would have to pay extra time.
No, no, that's, yep.
Now, I'm an advocate, if it's taking more time, then we need to get our money back one way or another when the land's sold, but, yeah, the first person doesn't always get the land. That was my concern.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that was my question.
Okay, speaker the second, Schaefer.
Yeah, I really like the notice, the practices that this suggests, and I remember talking about them at our meeting that we had earlier this year, so I'm in support.
Any other comments?
Tom, is your mic on? I got a text that said you're hard to hear. Number three, Logan, is that on? But maybe he's.
Hello?
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Baylor.
Yeah, I guess the whole available unavailable thing is interesting to me is like, it's almost like everything's available. And unless it's a snow dump, there's really a specific reason. I'm not sure why Plan Zoning Commission just doesn't, kind of alleviate the paperwork, it's just make it available, or it's available to do X, Y, and Z on. I don't know why we have to go through this. It comes to us, and we got to change it, but.
Yeah, so obviously, I just, I inherited these maps, these, the terms that are used. You know, my initial thought is that, you know, the term not available is just created so that, not necessarily discouraging people from pursuing that land, but just making it visually aware on the map that the city is, has some use for this spot currently, not that, you know, there's not a better use for it, but so, you know, maybe the term not available wasn't the best choice at the time, that's just the term that was used, so.
Yeah, well, I understand, like I say, I understand if it's a snow dump, you know, and like, no, we do not want to sell this under any circumstance, but I guess topic for Plan Zoning take up, but it seems like we go around and around in circles, it takes a lot off, and it seems like an unnecessary process. If we could streamline that, it would be helpful.
I've been saying that for 20 years.
Yeah, I know you have.
It's all available for the right price and the right reason. Any other discussion on this ordinance, it's first reading, it will come back for public hearing and second reading.
Well, can I make one more comment on it? I may be getting off subject a little bit, but I wonder if councils look at this at some point, and why couldn't we give Plan Zoning the authority to, at their own level, to say, yeah, we're going to make this available? Why does it have to come to us all the time? I know we approved the maps, but it's just a thought of like, somebody should be able to walk into Plan Zoning, say, I want to buy lot X, and they all have a discussion, and why do we have it? Da, 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 da. They're sharp people, and they go, yeah, let's put it out. Instead, it comes to us, and then it goes back, and then it goes out. But maybe just something to think about in the future.
Yeah, certainly something to think about. I think, you know, ultimately, the buck stops here, but we can pass on that authority to whoever we choose, whoever council chose us. Any other comments on this? Hearing none, then we'll take a voice vote on ordinance 1202 on first reading. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post? Motion carries.
It's a weak aye, Melina.
She's on Zoom, I think, that's why, not the regular call, so. Ordinance 1203, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, amending many codes as noted in your packet.
So moved.
First reading. It's been moved.
Second.
Ooh, Schaefer seconded. Carpenter. Okay, Councilmember Schaefer?
I appreciated the memo and the background info on this. My understanding is that it's just kind of making it a little more flexible, like what the, it's defining publish and publication to be a bit little more flexible. So in the case that our newspaper of record or some such is not available to print, we are still meeting our notice requirements as a city, so I'm in favor.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Agreed.
Okay, anybody else? Just cleaning it up so we are legit on our publishing. Okay, hearing no other comments, then, voice vote again, first reading. So all those in favor of ordinance 1203 on first reading?
Aye. Aye.
Post? Motion carries unanimous. Resolution 092226, a resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing amendment to the FY22 budget in the amount of $591,340 in revenue and $512,099 in expenses.
So moved. Second.
Ooh, Sherman. Second, and Carpenter. Councilmember Sherman?
These are all things that we've discussed at previous meetings, and I really appreciated the memo from the manager, and it's nice to see some of the numbers going up for actuals, what's coming in. So I am completely in support of this.
Ditto.
Let's just go around the table on this one. Councilmember Jones?
For comments?
Yeah, on this resolution.
I will be supporting this. Yeah, I also like to see the revenues going up, and I like that we didn't spend it all, so we can save a little bit. I know we've spent a lot out of our permanent fund, and permanent fund's kind of taken a hit, so if we have any additional revenue, like to see us pursue making a effort to restore some of that at your end, but.
Councilmember Schaefer, comments on this?
I'm in support.
Councilmember Gard?
I'm in support. So these are things we had already voiced an opinion on earlier that we were going to support, so it's time to, at the rubber meet the road, so I'm in support.
Okay, Councilmember Baylor?
I'm in support.
And Councilmember online?
Yep, I'm also in support. Thanks for bringing this to us, and it is nice to see the revenue is higher than the expenditures, so, thank you.
Okay, sounds like we're ready to vote, so this is a roll call on resolution 092226.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
And Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Okay, we got new miscellaneous business. Council concurrence of mayor's appointments to the Harbor Commission. I am nominating David Gleason and Tommy Sheridan for the two open seats on the Harbor Commission.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to, I move that City Council concurs with Mayor Allison's appointments.
You're not going to let me get a second in the night, are you?
Yeah. I'm sorry. Well, you got it anyway.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, debate? Okay, all those in favor of concurring, say aye.
Aye.
I was just going to say, I think there were a ton of qualified candidates, and I hope come February of 2023, there are a plethora of candidates for City Council, and I'm really pleased to see the fact that there were younger people interested, older people interested, a variety of the community, and that's what we need for all our boards, commissions, and city councils. So I really hope to see this trend continue.
Absolutely. I will, I will point out that I did write an individual letter to each applicant and thanked them for applying, and stated that council could not go wrong with whoever they appointed to these positions. They were all highly qualified individuals, and I did put a paragraph in there with each commission that had positions coming open in November with how many seats were going to be open on which ones, and encouraged them all to apply for one or more of those seats. So we did encourage them to stay involved, and I did get a reply from a few of them that said that they would watch for the advertisements for the November positions, so it's good. So, back to vote. All those in favor of concurring, say aye.
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 Post? Motion carries. Congratulations, guys, for joining the Harbor Commission. Council action on disposal and method of disposal for a portion of ATS 220. Councilmember Gard has a conflict on this. Councilmember Guard has a conflict on this, um, but I'm sure is available as citizen guard to answer any questions if you have any. Doesn't matter, you're okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to dispose of a requested portion of ATS 220. ODX slew is outlined in Cordova Municipal Code 5-Dat-Dash-22-060B by negotiating an agreement with Jeff Guard and Dorn to lease or purchase the property.
Second.
He's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Jones?
Um, this makes sense. Adding a house is a great use of some mud flat, so this is a slam dunk. Let's grow the taxable pie.
Councilmember Sherman?
It does make sense considering the topography of the area. I know that in the past with land disposals, we have tried to be consistent in terms of letting it go out to the public as much as possible to be fair, transparent, consistent. But in this case, I know that that's pretty impossible with this plot of land and I think it makes a lot of sense with their intentions, um, for our community.
Okay, anybody else? Councilmember Baylor?
Yeah, I would, I would, I'll call, echo Councilman Sherman's comments there. And I guess the only other comment is, and I'm sure Plan Zoning or the planner will make sure that there's adequate parking, that's a pretty tight spot down there, but that'll be part of the, the building permit process, so I'm totally in favor of it.
No, I echo the comments, I'm in favor and, yeah, makes sense to do it this way.
Councilmember Carpenter? Councilmember Meyer?
Yeah, I think that this makes a lot of sense. I think, um, any mud flat areas, um, makes good sense for the property owners that have access to it, um, to acquire it and make use of that space, so I very much in favor of it.
Okay, sounds like we're ready to vote. All those in favor of, um, disposal and method of disposal for a portion of ATS 220? Say aye.
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 Post? Okay. Go to work, Councilmember Guard? For citizen guard, yes. Pending agenda, CIP list, calendar, elected appointed officials list, yada, yada, yada. Anything from the pending agenda now? I think there was, I didn't, Prince William Sound Economic Development or who was it? Kristen had something we needed on the next agenda?
Yeah, for the, um, 21st? Yeah, the 21st, yeah.
What, you wanted to be a guest speaker or you haven't?
Yes, uh, both. We wanted, um, make a brief presentation about the Prince William Sound Ferry Authority feasibility study. Yeah, it'll be myself and Rebecca Braun from McKinley Research Group.
Will, will there be an item on the agenda or just?
Just the presentation, yeah, not an action.
Okay, okay.
I think that's what she was.
Yeah, sorry.
Anything else? Councilmember Schaefer?
Um, we never adopted the 2022 land disposal maps and we had referred that until the amendments to 5.22. We're going to come before council, which is what we did tonight. So do we need to do those or is it?
Well, that was first reading and then it needs 30 days to really be in effect, so Kevin and I almost wondered if we should just wait until next year.
And just do it?
At the beginning of the year, which is usually when we do it, but we can earlier than that. Have you felt like there's been people knocking down your door?
Uh, there's been a couple of people that have asked if there's updated maps and I've just let them know that there is no updates to, oh, well, I mean, I've let them know the couple of updates to them. So yeah, I have them ready to go with the updates that we have discussed previously, but like Susan said, with this, uh, 5.22 getting pushed so far into the year, um, we were either going to wait till, um, the first or second reading and bring it then, um, to make sure that there wasn't any issues that got brought up during this, during tonight's meeting that we might need to adjust the code further, so.
And you can't bring them earlier, but then I guess we wouldn't do them again in January, don't you agree? Do you think?
Well, the new code says that we have to.
I know. Why didn't you change that piece, Kevin?
Um, so yeah, I guess, um, like I said, I can bring them to you, um, after we finish up the 5.22, um, or if you want, just hold off and we'll do them, you know, in February, so.
No, no.
I mean, at this point, I guess I'm okay with waiting. I don't know what everyone else does and in that case we could get, remove it from the, um, pending agenda.
That's true, okay.
But that's my opinion.
Can do, and maybe I'll just put, we'll do timely for 2023.
Works for me.
Okay.
I think as long as the public's getting the information from the planner when they, when they come in and we're good.
Yeah, there's no, there's no new land that's been added, so it's not like anyone's missing out on something that's newly available, so.
Thank you.
Anything else on that pending agenda? Anything we need to make sure is on the, we got till next Wednesday to decide. If there's something you think about before then?
Oh, Malina.
Let me hear the Kirk, oh, Malina, go ahead.
Um, I was thinking that maybe we could put the, um, the voting seats, the unassigned seats, maybe on the next meeting to talk about. I know that we just had ranked choice voting and I think maybe all of us have a little better understanding of how the state's doing it and we could probably have a better informed discussion on how we want to do it on a city level or how we want to do our city council seats.
Isn't that a, uh?
It's number, um?
Yeah, what is that?
We originally said to wait after the November election, but.
Are we ready to discuss that again or?
Waiting till after the general election, is that what you were saying?
That was our original, what we had said, but I think that was before we knew there was going to be a.
Special.
Special election, but she's suggesting we could do it sooner.
But undesignated seats is very different from ranked choice voting, so I'm not sure we had talked about undesignated seats. What, how big of a conversation do we want to have? Because that's big to me.
Wasn't part of the question, the timing?
Well, yeah, we'd need to do it, any kind of change th, this fall for it to happen in our 2023 March election, I would say.
Right.
Councilmember Guard?
I'd be more in favor of this after November. We've had enough confusion going on already and I don't know that we need to stuff anymore in on a local level and I think it'd be a good idea to let some of that soak in a little more thoroughly and then we'd have this winter after budget to sit down. I mean, we've got budget and that, that's going to take up a bunch of time coming up. So if we want to do a good job at this, I think we'd, would behoove us to look at a clearer section of the calendar to do it in.
I think we'll leave it on the pending agenda after the November elections and figure it out. Is that all right? Councilmember Meyer?
Yeah, I think we put it on there for after the November election, but I was thinking that it was going to kind of get busy with budget cycle and I personally don't need to sit on my opinion until after the regular election and, um, if it's going to be a ballot proposition going in November, I think maybe staff would want extra time.
Any ballot propositions for? Any ballot propositions for the city's election would have to be decided on by council by January?
Yes, early January. But I, I guess, it all depends on how big of a ballot proposition it, it is. Is it a complete title to rewrite? In which case the attorneys need a lot of time to work that out. It could almost be something advisory that we then work on through the course of the year to really have an effect for a 2024 election. Although I don't know exactly how like you could get details in an advisory vote. Sorry, I'm not very helpful.
Well, maybe it would be helpful to, to have just a discussion item on an agenda to talk about what the options are. I mean, when you say title two, you know, do we want to do a big rewrite? I think, ooh, are we, are we pulling the structure down to the studs when we only meant to change a few light switch plates or something? Is that, how do we?
Ranked choice voting is pulling it down to studs.
Right, but there, but, so, right, but, and so I just thought we should have a conversation about it because I think we were just talking about undesignated seats, which isn't exactly ranked choice.
Yeah.
Not at all. Agenda item or work session?
Maybe a 30-minute work session?
Yeah. But maybe October, so I can get Holly involved.
I think, one, the disc, I'm sorry, one of the original discussion, it was just a simple discussion of do we want to have C, T, A, B, and C or do we just want the three highest vote getters? I, I think that's kind of where it was at. I don't think anything about ranked choice or anything and.
Right.
For whatever reason, we had a kind of a concurrence and we weren't going to do it, we weren't going to, I mean, I'm good for just simply talking about that, but I don't want to start paying a lawyer to, and then we're going to go, no, let's just leave it the way it is. So if we just simplify it, do we want to have a discussion on whether we keep the seats or just the highest vote getters? That would be a discussion that I would prefer.
I don't think we need to involve the lawyers until a decision has been made and if we decide that we want to go.
Yeah, there you go.
One way or the other, then we might have to involve the lawyers. Councilmember Guard?
I still go back, we keep trying to talk about throwing workshop in here and do this and doing this in short clips. This could be a big enough change for us, it could take some meaningful time to work out whether it's rewrite a title two or whatever it's involved. And I don't think it behooves us to try to stuff this in in little pieces before budget and all that stuff. Budget's a huge thing to be dealing with now that numbers are all going like this. So I, I think after the first of the year would be a way better time to sit down. I mean, we could have a community meeting or whatever we want, if you want input for the community to see if they're interested in this stuff, but, you know, to really sit down and work on it, I don't think we should even touch it until after the first of the year.
Yeah, and I don't think we need to be rushing anything to get on the next ballot. I mean, is, this isn't something that.
It's not going to make any difference for anybody in the community. It's more for those of us that are gluttons for punishment.
Okay, last chance to get something off the pending agenda. No takers? All right, we'll get everything in by next Wednesday. Okay, brings us up to audience participation. Come up, state your name.
Thank you, Tommy Sheridan, 610 Spruce Street. I just wanted to, um, talk a little bit about mariculture briefly. So with former mayor Copeland's support and nomination, I serve on the Alaska Mariculture Alliance, um, and its executive committee as its secretary. Um, and just wanted to give you a little update there. Um, we have a new executive director and the state of Alaska has, um, allocated $5 million to AMA as part of an economic recovery mariculture incentive grant program. But really what I wanted to talk today is about some bigger numbers that have kind of come about in the past several months. The Exxon Valdez Oil Spill Trustee Council has allocated $32.8 million to mariculture research and development in the spill affected region. And more recently, the, um, USEDA through its Build Back Better Regional Challenge, um, grant program awarded $49 million to the Alaska Mariculture Cluster. And I just want to acknowledge and thank Kristen and Helen for, um, the Prince William Sound Economic Development District's role in, in that one. Uh, the total value for Alaska Mariculture Cluster is actually 65 million. That includes matching resources, et cetera. So I just wanted to just bring it to folks' attention. These are, these are big numbers and, and they will have benefits for the community. And, um, if, if you were to revitalize the, the fisheries committee, I was a former member of that, I'm still listed on the list, I'd be happy to serve in that capacity as well. I think there's a lot that's coming in this area in particular. Another grant that's pending right now is for $85 million and that's through USDA's Climate Smart Commodities Program. So this is an area that's pretty exciting and I think it's going to bring a lot of benefit to our community in this region. I just wanted to share that with you all. And also thank you very much for the nomination and concurrence and appointment to the harbor commission.
Thank you.
Thanks for serving, Mayor.
Appreciate your service, yep.
Yep, thanks.
Any other comments from the audience? Hearing none, then we'll move on to council comments. I'll start on the line, Councilmember Meyer?
Yeah, thank you. It was nice to see the notice for city property. Never really been a fan of the process, but I think that this will make it a little more transparent to the residents and people of Cordova, knowing when property that has been marked unavailable can be marked available or when it is going to be marked available or possibly marked available. It was also really nice to see so many people turn in applications for the harbor commission. That was really encouraging and I guess it kind of got me thinking about our local elections for our city council and I think, um, not declaring a seat, maybe we'll get more turnout for a city council as well. And I think that that could be a good change. And then welcome Andrew to your new position for Chief of Police, excited and, um, thank you Nate for the time that you put in, so thank you, everyone.
Okay, Councilmember Schaefer?
Um, yeah, I'd also like to thank everyone who submitted their name for, oh, excuse me, harbor commission. Um, that was really heartening to see so many people willing, wanting to be involved, so that was really cool. Um, also welcome to new staff, it's nice to meet you, nice to have you and others that were in the packet. And then, um, it was good to see everyone tonight. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sherman?
Um, sure, I just wanted to, um, also welcome the new chief back to Cordova. You either love it or you don't, so it's nice you love it. And I just wanted to congratulate, kudos to staff and the city manager because this packet, I had, I, I read the packet three times and I make lots of questions on my first read and then my second read is a little deeper and I cross off questions. And my third read today, this morning, I crossed off all my questions because everything was answered in here and it was really nice to, I mean, I will come in if I have questions, but they were all answered, processes were answered. I've never necessarily been a part of appointments to commissions and I wasn't sure what the process was there and that was all very clearly stated, so I really appreciated that and, um, it's, I'm sure it saves staff time having us come in to visit, but, uh, it was a great job on a packet and fiscal notes being included, um, like with the fiscal amendment, um, are perfect and as staff, we learned that a long time ago and it was really nice to see, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Guard?
Welcome to the new chief. Good to have you home again. Um, other than that, I think all the comments have been made by those heard me. Thank you.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Yeah, I also want to welcome our new police chief. Thank you for coming back and, um, echo the comments made about the packets and all the people who applied for the harbor commission. Certainly there are going to be some seats opening up, so now we've got a really good list of folks, hopefully, uh, who have expressed interest. And as far as the, um, whether we do a code change for how council seats are filled, I wasn't thinking that would, we would make, that we would open it into a big whole, uh, title two review. I was thinking, let's keep it focused on that one question and it wouldn't take, it would be a narrower discussion. That's why I was proposing a shorter amount of time, that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
Echo the comments before me. Welcome to the new chief and thanks to staff. Thanks everybody who put in for the harbor commission. I think we came out with two really good commissioners. I'm happy to see. I'm happy to see that and, uh, looking forward to working on the Harbor project with them and working to benefit the community. So, um, I generally support the idea of what we talked about with changing from designated seats. I think I brought that up in public comment a few years ago, so it's, uh, something I would support, so thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Baylor?
Well, for the record, Jeff Gard helped Marv get his moose. I guess if people can put stuff on the record, I'll throw it out there.
Okay.
I had some issues with my water lines at one of my buildings. Once again, the city water crew, boy, they show up, they're helpful, they get the job done, they're appreciative, I really appreciate it. I think those guys just do an outstanding job. Um, I know I've sung their praises before, but it's, they're, to me, they set the model the way the rest of the city staff, not that they don't, the way the rest of the city staff should work with the public, because they just do a great job and were very helpful and we got the problems, uh, resolved. The, the land disposal that we addressed today, interestingly enough, I had a piece of property right across the slough. I was looking to do exactly the same thing, but that's owned by the state, not the city. And I'm, I'm throwing this out there just as we try to solve or look for answers for our housing crunch. I wonder if today, if that wouldn't have been something I could have bought forward and maybe the city could have stepped in and, and tried to work with the state. Like, they're not doing anything with it, um, to help us resolve our, our land issues. And maybe there's some other state parcels around, maybe we should look at those issues and see if we can't get them to release it because there would have been a house there had that been available. There's other, there was another lot that the city had that when I developed some property, I asked to purchase that and had I been able to get that, I would have, instead of four houses, would have been a, build six houses. We did not have this land disposal program at that time, so when the manager tells me, tells you, no, you're not, we're not gonna sell it to you because Parks and Rec guy wants people to walk across that to the next road, there was no other avenue. So for those people, maybe our system isn't perfect, but it gives the citizens a right to come forward and say, I don't, you know, I would like to purchase this. But there again was two houses and the city had another lot recently that we had this, 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 uh, program. Uh, it was four city lots. I addressed council at the time, said, change it to two lots, re-subdivide it, change it to two lots, sell them separately and we get two houses on there. They, ah, we don't want to do that, so they sold it and one house got, got on there. So there'd have been a net gain of four houses if all of these things would have come and just think about four houses today. Uh, the reason I'm bringing this up is we do have an issue, we need to think out of the box because there's not a lot of lots available, we need to put pressure on the state. If there, I don't know of any, but if there's some state land, maybe we need to start going down that road to try to get it from them. The university owns a lot of land. I think people are, you look at what Sharon and Joyce is doing, there's people out there that'll put the work in to develop the stuff if we can just get it available. That would help our, our housing crunch for sure. Again, thanks to staff and thanks for the, uh, Susan for her help today and kept me straight on this and appreciate everybody, thank you.
Thank you. I think there's one more motion.
Make the motion.
With no objection, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah, right across the slough of state.
Yes, I know.